And a moment of silence, please. Thank you. I feel like the sound system is like really working well. No, I'm nowhere near it. That's good, it's a good change. Welcome to our monthly meeting, we're here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. You know, I just told a student yesterday at the veteran service that I work for him. Oh, I gave you my card, I work for you. We do want to hear from our citizens and there's time and public comment prior to action items on the agenda. We ask speakers identify themselves in their home district. We also ask that the comments are limited to three minutes in order to provide equity to all speakers and to ensure our meeting is reasonable and succinct. If you have more information that can be summarized in three minutes, please provide leave of half materials for the board's review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as time selects. If you have questions during this session, you may ask for clarification from your school board member or a school administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening? Motion, Mr. Grove, is her second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Barnes, any changes or comments? All in favor of that? Aye, close enough. The school board lays on Skylar could have here tonight, she sent her notes because she's very thorough.
If you want, I can run through a couple of her...
The highlights?
Yeah, highlights, of course, our sports. Cheer team placed fifth at States on November 9th. Girls' cross-country is advancing the States on November 16th. Along with two individual boys, Eve Cordero and Mika Ellis. Volleyball team will compete at regionals tomorrow against Riverheads. Drama was runner-up at varsity regional theater tournament on November 2nd. They advanced to regionals on November 14th. We had senior month interviews on November 6th. That's the wonderful event where the seniors are interviewed by community members and go through a pretty streaming process of taking feedback and going through the actual interview with people they don't know. It's interesting to see.
But I got to introduce Skylar, so...
Oh, so that's...
It was actually me, I guess I never remember.
So more confident. Career Day was held on November 8th. Students had the opportunity to explore different careers and talk to community volunteers about their jobs. Veterans Day assembly was beautiful yesterday on November 11th. The RCHS band was phenomenal as always. The veterans were honored for their service. Food pantry, collecting donations, Thanksgiving foods. We had stuff the bus, we'll run that later. High school students took a trip to Winchester Medical this month where they were able to discover the various careers in the health profession. And of course Thanksgiving break later this year, November 27th through 29th.
Where is the four people?
Here, it's here.
Wow. They still need somebody to help with the timer, the last I heard, I thought. Somebody that does the timer. I think they need some help. Anybody that knows are gonna be there. They should volunteer if they know they're needed and help out. So if you find someone in charge, see if they fill that spot. I'm according as well to somebody. Yeah, so the drum performances or...
Time.
I think that's the event. I think that's the event that has to be.
Yeah, it is, because it has to be.
Right. And the girls volleyball, regardless of whether how things come out in Riverheads, they are going to the state championship games regardless.
How are they, when is that?
Well, the Riverhead Games tomorrow night at Riverheads. And then Saturday's championship, so things happen quick, right? State. You have PCU? Here, I think it's a PCU. Oh, Sam, okay.
Sam.
Thanks too. All right, and... If you read, if you read the internet, you know that already. All right. All right, well, thank you Skylar for your virtual... Virtual presentation. All right, moving on to donations.
Okay, I have two to report. Grant Williams Tree Service donated a month for a raffle for the cheerleaders. Trinity Episcopal Church donated $1,539. And that is for the discretionary fund of the elementary school to assist a student, all right.
Thanks. Or is there a motion to approve the minutes from October 8th?
Certainly.
Motion, Ms. Barnes, is her second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Myers, any comments? All in favor of that? Aye, close enough. Mr. Grove, did you have opportunity to review?
I did.
The bills, all of them? All right, the consent agenda includes the approval of donations and letters of grad 2, payment of the bills, and approval of attention reports and our motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion, Mr. Uben, is her second? Second, Mr. Grove, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye, close enough.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. On my first report, I'm going to ask Manny Butler to come up to the podium and share some exciting news about the Farm to School grant.
Hey, just make sure that mic's working as good as these others. That's pretty good. Really? Thanks, thanks. That's good. So to fix that... It'll drop.
Testing. That's good. Thank you. So we are the recipients of a Farm to School grant from the Virginia Department of Education's School Nutrition Program. We are very excited. So our program goals are to increase access to Virginia grown foods in our school nutrition program, to enrich the educational opportunities for our students, to connect school gardens, cafeteria, classrooms, and our overall community, as well as, which I believe we already have, is that further enhance our Farm to School team, which is made up of internal partners as well as community partners. The picture there to the right is one of our trays from Virginia Farm to School Week this past October. So we had local ground beef in our chili, and then the salad and bell peppers came from a local source here in Virginia. So the grant itself runs for a year from this October through September 2020. We were awarded $25,000, which will be spent on equipment and supplies, professional development, contracted services, curriculum team development, as well as miscellaneous items. So the bulk of that $25,000 is going towards equipment and supplies. So the first one that I am extremely excited about, we are gonna buy, it's a mobile kitchen cart or edible cooking cart demo, that is the top right-hand picture. So that comes fully stocked with youth cooking supplies as well as a curriculum. So Commit to Be Fit will be hiring two after-school cooking class instructors to have throughout the year. One for our younger students, one for our older students. Again, since this is through Commit to Be Fit and through this program, it'll be free for our students. So more to come on that, what we're really excited about. The next item, we will be purchasing two new refrigerators, one for each school. So the past two years, we've had an increase of fresh produce, which is incredible, but it also leads to a storage issue. Some of our equipment is older and frequently needing repairs. So we'll be supplying two new refrigerators for our cafeterias, as well as...
They're gonna be commercial?
Yes. As well as salad bars. So our staff works extremely hard to add the presentation of the food, local items on the salad bar. So we want to enhance our salad bars so they can also be aesthetically pleasing. Tower garden, so this is the first top left-hand picture. This is a vertical garden. We have one here at the high school that is utilized. We want to add one to the elementary school for learning opportunities. The next item for each cafeteria, we'll be getting fruit and vegetable sectionizers. So we have one currently that we use for oranges and so forth, so we quickly slice fruit. But there is a new one I learned about in training this summer. It just comes with different slicers for tomatoes and onions, boiled eggs, a lot of things for the salad bar that can be done quickly and efficiently. We'll also be purchasing a cart for the high school. And then the last item, Sarah Moore and I kind of sat down and gathered a lot of ideas of what she could still use for the gardens at most schools, so additional garden supplies.
You're doing the raised beds for the high schools?
Some of it, but most of it, it had to be materials, those materials.
But I mean, that's the material you needed for that?
It wasn't included in this grant, but we can definitely...
Yeah, well, we'll...
Sure. We weren't aware at the time, but that's definitely... For professional development, three people can be sent to the National Farm to School Conference to network and learn ideas of what other schools across the country are doing for back here. Contracted services, so we will be contracting Chef Nally Ortiz from Fall Fair County Public Schools to come into a training with our cafeteria staff. So we had her previously come out and she did an awesome training on efficient knife skills since we do have an increase in fresh produce, as well as seasoning with more herbs and spices to kind of get away from salt and pepper, using more herbs and spices to try to cook vegetables in different ways. So we want to bring her back out this year to do a training on utilizing seasonal produce all throughout the school year for menu planning and meal preparation, as well as a plumber fee to install a stick-in. The fourth item, which is me, the third one, curriculum and team development. So Giles County Adland Lab Tour. If you're not familiar, I highly encourage you to look them up. Giles County is in southwest Virginia, about 30 minutes outside Virginia Tech. They have an incredible, incredible hands-on learning opportunity for students, everything from livestock to vegetable production. The students are even making spaghetti sauce out of the tomatoes and canning it in the cafeteria. I mean, just full spectrum, it's incredible. So we would love to go down there and just learn the steps of how they got to where they are now.
They did a presentation, I think it was last year, at the ESBA conference that I got to go to. You were busy, but I got to present it, but I got to go see, you know, it's a fascinating program.
It's incredible, yeah, so we would love to go down there and learn more.
My niece and nephew got, that's where they went to school, so I'd like to hear about it.
Additional field trip expenses, so the top picture, that was when we took our third grade class at the time to the farmer's market in Warrington, so we'd like to continue that. And then as well as one of our vendors, 4P Foods slash Local Food Hub, they just recently merged. They have a new distribution center in Vint Hill in Fall Fair County, which could really be a great opportunity for students to see the aggregation, the moving side of food and learn the business side of how to get local products out. And then the last one, the Plants Map Interactive QR. I learned about this in Loudoun County, their school garden. It's a really neat little tag that goes in the garden, and you can use your smartphone to scan the QR code at the bottom right of that black tag, and it pulls up all about the plant, lots of facts, really cool things that students can learn about while they're out there. And then we also have money additional left for miscellaneous items, so more banners and posters for the schools, additional curriculum support for our teachers, as well as the freshmen, we'd like to have a farmer interest meeting so local farmers can learn about our requirements and kind of the ins and outs of purchasing and buying for local school cafeterias. And then I'd like to extend a thank you to Dr. Grinsley, Ms. Bynum, and then Ms. Dewick with the Pat Foundation. They all submitted letters of support for our application, which we greatly appreciate, so thank you.
Replant. Sorry.
Can we get ready to just... Not done, you say it right there.
Yes. So we're excited. So I'm, I'll be excited to bring back some updates for the next year, how we're staying.
Okay, so I've asked Manny to talk about Stuff the Bus, and it's kind of funny how this came about. Mr. Uben actually sent me something that he saw in another county through something similar and said, hey, you might be interested in that. And I said, I'll bring it to the next administrative meeting, and then Manny jumped all over. So I'll let you explain what's going on with that.
So thank you for sharing that initiative and your work. So we are having a food drive throughout the division between, we added a friendly competition. So we have grade groups pre-K through 3, 4 through 7, and then 8 through 12. Commit to Be Fit will be awarding them a nice thank you recognition. Talked to Manny at the food pantry, and the items on the right were some that they are in need of this time of year, as well as some items that they need throughout the year, such as condiments, olive oil, salad dressings. So we are collecting donations through next Monday, the 18th. And I went over there just about an hour ago. Between those schools, we have a total of 179 individual items so far. So we are excited to keep bringing in some more food items the next home raise, and then we'll pack the bus, and then we'll drive it over to the food pantry and donate. Any questions? Thank you.
I just wanted to share with you the November 1st Professional Development Day schedule and what our teachers were busy accomplishing that day. It was an early release, so we had a very limited amount of time, but the agenda items are here. We had a great presentation by Laney Bickers and Stephanie Beard, who were able to attend a performance-based assessment training. And it was a train-the-trainer type model on full-blown implementation and the compliance with the state and all the repositories that are now out there with these performance-based assessments, but also how to ensure that it's, that those assessments actually meet the muster of what the state requirements are. So they've shared with staff members how you can tell, how if you just pull one offline, how can you tell if it's really assessing what you want it to, is it getting at the essence of the standard? And it is also bringing up to the death technology need for that standard. So it's great training, and we'll continue work with that. We have to, we had to submit this year a balanced assessment plan for the state, so a big piece of this is making sure we move into compliance and we're ensuring that anywhere that the SOLs were removed, that there are performance tasks aligned with each of the strands. So we're doing those things, some of them are very, very simple things and not full-blown projects, you know, performance-based projects and PBL-type things, but performance tasks aligned with the assessment. Interesting stuff there. I got to geek out a little bit on unpacking SOL curriculum, which I love. I had way more fun than I think anyone who attended, but that's okay. We unpacked the state curriculum, it was required for new teachers. It's a lot to, they were trained an overview on this, and then we went deeper on how you align your standards now that you've been teaching a while, how you make sure that you understand your curriculum framework in and out, all the essential understandings, how you go beyond just the standard itself and make sure that your students are able to produce what you want them to instructionally, and how do we do that? We pull out the certain verbs that are essential, the content, the principles, come up with key vocabulary that needs to be taught, and then align it to your pacing, and then also to your lesson plan. So they get to see and actually work on their own curriculum framework the whole time and then go put it into practice. And they will earn additional professional development points if they unpack the entire framework and then show me a lesson plan where they align them and done the process, so it is exciting. All the time, and in fact, some of the people that got the most out of it were my veteran teachers who came and wanted to align some of theirs and rework it, because after you've been out of it for a while, it's always good to get back in, so. And then we had a wonderful training at the RCHS Maker Space Lab, the teacher workroom, where we had an ITRT team come from Culpeper and actually work with the teachers on lessons and how you use some of the equipment and materials in there. It was great, and a lot of the teachers who didn't expect to get much out of it now are coming to Maker Space and saying, okay, I want to take this out, how do I do this, prototype this? So it's, it's good use for all high school students. There's 3D printing capability, it's all mobile, so they can take it to their classrooms. There were these fabrication blocks that you're able to create certain ideas and build from artistically. And then I know Mr. Schlosser saw those, and they're very expensive, these blocks that you build with. And so his class wants to replicate them to a point where it doesn't, you know, mess with the pattern in different sizes, so. But his class actually wants to replicate those and make more for the stage, so he got some of that out of it. Wish I could give you more detail on that, with Dr. Fulker, that's, yeah. But yeah, so pretty exciting. And then on top of that, teachers were required to go to one of those sessions, and then the rest of the time, they could either attend another session, work in their rooms, or work on their school improvement teams, because we do, we are part of a continuous school improvement process. All schools are required to do that regardless of accreditation status, so it's new, the rules have changed a lot, so there's a lot of work to be done there, and we'll be presenting on that a little more next week. Overall, a good, good day. Good afternoon. It was a good early day, too. Okay, the next item is every odd year in November, I am supposed to give you an update on where we are on our comprehensive plan goals. So I've prepared a little report for you that is really supposed to be a very quick snapshot of each of the goals in the five-year plan. Now granted, with these... With these goals, the rules do change along, along the way. So we've had a lot of that happen in this five-year plan, so we've had to analyze all of that and kind of step back and rework some of our strategic objectives to match what's been going on, so. The first page, content knowledge is our goal one. See if I can pull this up, we have copies of these for anyone who wants to take a look. All right, so goal one, content knowledge. Will achieve and apply appropriate academic and technical knowledge. We've met a lot of objectives that were set out in our full comprehensive plan, some of those being making sure all our pacing guides were aligned for all core subjects, program adoption with fidelity training, data analysis, targeted interventions for subgroups, fluid grouping and reading, promotion of technology and STEM integration, addition of instructional coaches through Teacher Leaders Program. We've developed tiered attendance approach to remember the chronic absenteeism step and accreditation that jumped in and extreme there that we really, we continue to struggle with and grapple with. We even had a meeting about that this morning, and just how it's one of those factors that is pretty much out of our control, but we're going to be graded on it. We're doing everything we can do, but it's still going to, you know, count against you, so. And there are little nuances in there about, you know, coding certain children in situations a certain way so it doesn't, you know, affect you too much, but it has to align very strictly to these regulations. And everything is very transparent with the state because of our reporting systems and our student information systems, so. Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a struggle, so. But right now, we're looking at any kids who have that 10%, who have hit the 10% mark, excused or unexcused, they both count, doesn't matter basically. So there really isn't a lot of...
That came out of DOE?
Yes.
Virginia DOE?
Yes.
It's interesting, if a youngster has... And that, you have to mean a...
Yes, chronically asked and not turned, but yeah, it's crazy. It's one of those things, yeah, we're all kind of screaming at the state saying, look, we can lose accreditation when we actually could perform better on our assessments, and we can lose it because, you know, so we have so many kids that are 10%.
Pretty good problem about here, I guess, but we need to make sure somebody is aware of the justice, the administrator, you know, or the teacher, or the speaker. And it's ridiculous. If you have a child and they're marching late, ill, but because you've been nagged about a school, they must attend, you send your marching lady sick kid to school, which is then gonna make other children...
Where you send your mom?
Sick, or really sick, because I just, I think...
Then we have a lot of sick children in that aspect.
First, the administrator, you don't trust a parent to know for a child, I don't like, I don't like that attitude. And it seems like we need to make some kind of statement to them as a group.
I would think that we would. I don't know when and where you make that statement.
State superintendent, I'll address a question that I asked actually, and that I practiced. He just said, well, you need better parents, and then hitting his bill, he was being rude. But it was, you know, he said he's got a lot. Oh, yeah. Oh, he will. Any chance we can, we need to be... Because it's not good for kids to go to school sick, you know.
Well, it's not good for kids, it's not good for people. Sick kid walking through the door.
Adults include.
So that's one of the, we have a tiered system approach, it is working really well. At least we have a good relationship with parents, they're communicating so much better in the couple of years we've been using it. And we have spent a lot of time tracking down, you know, making sure you are aware your child is out, yes. So just being sure we have that, because we have to document all this.
And that problem, you know, it's not the true office.
No, that doesn't come into play until they're unexcused and so many after that, so. If they're excused, parent knows, well, we have a lot of parents that know that their child is sick a lot, you know, and know that their child is dead a lot, so there's nothing I can do about that, you know, so. But that's, that's part of... They're excited, but...
I think that would be a topic of discussion as well.
So that's what I'm thinking, we need to know how to direct our energy to achieve a result.
Yes.
And it could be that we, you know, lose the flight attack. We, we talk to our representative, we can then put pressure back.
Is that something that after the ESBA, the most...
I'm sure there's gonna be a session on that.
That's one of them, we have quite a few talking points.
I would imagine...
What sort of association, what's that to say?
I don't think they typically take a stance on that stuff. I know VAS... Not so much, at least VAS does, the Virginia Association of School Super Tenants takes a stand on that. But ESBA usually stays pretty neutral on topics and doesn't really advise somewhere and other other than strict policy that's provided, you know, so they don't really take it. But they do, I mean, corners against rules. Yeah, that's true, so they could be...
But this is certain, this is certain benefit in terms of voice of people, this is a DOE. That's why I was initially asking, this is a DOE directive.
It is, and I think they'll look at that data really quick when they see all the schools that are losing accreditation because of that indicator. So once they see that, that's usually, which doesn't help us when, you know, we fall on because of that, but sometimes they... But they should see it coming, because the data should already be there, and they're not even losing accreditation with the levels. It is, so they should... Already at their fingertips saying, okay, guys, if we continue with this, we're gonna have no accredited schools in the state of Virginia, basically, you know, so it could be something like that, so. Well, the Board of Education, but then... And different, there's different legislators for different bills that go forth, so. I'll, I'll reach out to some of my VAS partners too and see who's, who's leading the charge on some of that. Maybe we can target there, but.
Would you roll, would you roll small schools?
Um, yeah, they have...
Are they the ones that are getting hurt the most?
Yes.
Because of the numbers.
Numbers, exactly.
10%, 10%, my one kid is the same as 100 kids.
So that's, every single student counts for every indicator for us, okay? And the smaller our numbers are getting, and the more they take out of the denominator for our test takers, that's another point I want to bring up with our SL performance. We do really well, we're a high-performing school, we know we do need to work in reading. If you look at our subgroups, Hispanic students and economically disadvantaged are two that are struggling, okay? So those two, we really need to make sure we're closing achievement gaps. History, remember, I predicted that one right as soon as they changed the SL and how they were going to test, because now we're not allowed to test students who have already met their history requirement, but they still have to take their class. So what you've done is basically you're testing kids who have been unsuccessful on history tests and still need it, so what you've done is you've taken out your best test takers. So I said, I'm sorry, I'm just telling you this is what's gonna happen in history, just watch. We did the best we could, but it's those students who typically struggle. And we did the best we could, but it's those students who typically struggle and may actually get an alternative assessment later to, for graduation. So that's what we're testing. So, you know, understanding what's behind the data is really important because the rules keep changing right before our eyes and we have to keep up with that.
And again, that's going to be common.
Oh, yes.
Also common, but.
It is, yes.
But our data is more amplified.
Right. Smaller schools, it's, it's a lot more difficult and we have to be very, very particular in targeted interventions, especially with our subgroups that will get you almost indicators. Reading is definitely a topic that we are looking at. You'll hear a lot more about that when we do our school improvement presentation to you next month at both schools. We've done a comprehensive needs assessment. We've gone through lots of subcommittee work. Every single teacher at the elementary school has been involved in the continued school improvement process. And then many, many teachers at the high school, led by their deans and their BLT, their faculty leadership team. So it's been a really great process, a lot of data and a lot that's actually coming up to the surface that, some of it we didn't see before, that we get to now refine and great process. So we're working toward that. So we're very happy we've been accredited fully for five years in a row, even with these crazy rules that are changing constantly, but, you know, where there's always room for improvement always. And we know that, we're always looking for that. Our graduation rates, our advanced diplomas are almost up to the halfway mark they were last year with our completion factors. So that's great, very, very low dropout rate. We want to, next steps, continue to enhance technical skills opportunities, provide additional hands-on learning opportunities, more tiered grouping ability, especially for primary grades, and enhanced early childhood. We're pretty convinced with the data that we have and even more so that we've gathered through our mixed delivery grant, that early childhood, investing there is really going to pay off in so many ways later. And there's no mandate for preschool. There's no money for preschool. So if we don't get anything else, that investment can't take part. And then you add to that the issues that we've seen with the revenge market, now our LCI has jumped up again. So we're going to lose state money and we have more mandates we're going to have to hit. So that costs more. We have higher need, that costs more. And guess what? You do it with less money. And that's what's happening across the Commonwealth with our rural divisions. And that's why we sent the press release last week and we're trying to get way ahead of it before even the governor's budget is even released, right? So that's another B. So if they don't give us back that enrollment loss funding or a whole, whole harmless provision, that's really going to be difficult, especially when we want to invest more in early childhood, get those class sizes down and maybe do more with preschool. I don't know where we're going to plan that. Not yet, but we have to see what mechanisms are going to be in that calculation tool as it comes closer. Okay? So that's where we are with content knowledge. There's so much that goes into instruction. It's a beautifully challenging and complex scope and a lot of moving parts. Career preparation, in that goal, we've done quite a lot of significant advancements. The development of the profile, the graduate team has been pretty innovative across the state. I haven't seen a team quite like it yet. And that, with our career coach and our VCAC person, Virginia College Advising Core, full-time advisor in there, that has been amazing, by the way. Already greatly increasing our families who are participating in the VAS book. Yeah, and she's phenomenal. And the program itself, even regardless of who, who that person is, the hours and time that they dedicate to the students and the way the programs laid out, it's wonderful. We have a partnership with LFCC, of course, with Career Coach, we talked about Virginia College Advising Core, Eighth Grade Academy for Transition, Peer Mentorship Program, Career Talks for Middle School. We're starting, launching the Children's Savings Account Program with a kickoff event for kindergarten parents in December. So we're looking forward to that with the full program starting in January. Here it comes. And we have a robust partnership with RAPC, formerly RAPU. And we wish to continue to grow with them as they're expanding and so excited that they're getting that CHEV endorsement that we're able to offer.
They have it.
They have it. It went through all the way, that's right. So now that they're CHEV recognized, and don't ask me to say with that acronym, secondary higher education, something like that, but it's basically the accrediting body for, yeah, post-secondary institutions.
It's like the Southern Association of College.
Something like that, yes. So, but that, with that rating, they can now offer a whole lot more for certifications and things. It can't be a degree conferring institute, but they can still.
There's so many things in the medical field that are strategic.
Oh, so many in the whole workforce.
There's not a degree for it.
So, yeah. So we continue to talk to them, of course. We have a great partnership with Doug Schiffman over there and some board members. We continue to talk about ways to share staffing. We're working on cybersecurity and our team and expanding our health science academy model. So really excited. We want to continue to explore partnerships with local businesses, continue to explore options available in surrounding districts, incentivizing dual enrollment endorsements and additional endorsements for teachers. With those staffing ratios, it's really difficult for a small district with very limited opportunities for students to go out and, and work somewhere. You know, you can't hire a staff person for each career cluster of each strand. It's just hard work, right? So other school districts are able to partner with bigger business and bigger industry and it's a lot easier. So we're trying very hard to, to keep pace and looking for other opportunities that way. And we're going to explore a career academy model of high school redesign. We are in the process of studying that right now. And you've heard me talk about the academy model before, but basically is, it's knowing that we are limited in what we can offer kids. And sending everybody off everywhere else costs a whole bunch of money because transportation costs so much money, right? So.
Lots of money.
Yeah, lots of time and all of that. So the academy model utilizes all the resources that you can in your local context to maximize the workplace skills you can pack into a very structured and intentional career pathway for kids. So for instance, let's say we, the natural one is our health science academy model. The idea that we've come up with locally is to have an academy model where every graduate who goes through the academy gets so many certifications, so many dual enrollment credits, so many hours of actual work-based learning, and a post-secondary promise by some kind of outside sponsor. So with RAPC, that's a really easy one because we've already got that in place, but let's say if you go through the academy model, you get certified in CNA, HHA, HMA, radiology, phlebotomy, you get five certifications, then you get all of those dual enrollment. Plus you get a very promise with a job at, you know, the Heritage Center or something like that. So those things are almost already there. So just putting it in a prepackaged. So another one we are looking at is ag. So not necessarily that that's where the job market is, but that there, there are a lot of jobs in agriculture, absolutely, but we know that that labor market is kind of diminishing a little. However, the workplace skills that you can learn with an ag academy are incredible because you build in the welding and building trades and horticulture, environmental science, animal science, all these pieces together. And we have the great local context to do it. And embedded within that is FFA. And how great is that going to be? I can't believe we haven't been able to do an ag program here. And trust me, I tried for six years to get that going and it just would not launch because of interest and staffing and having the appropriate endorsements in that area. So with the academy model, we can have that ag academy and say, once you're through here, this is how many credits you get in all these pieces that, yes, make you more of a comprehensive robust trainee and you have all these skills and credentials to go with you, no matter where you go to work, the ag academy will give you these. So we want to launch those two hopefully next year. We're studying all the pieces, seeing what the impact of the partners and all those pieces. So there'll be a presentation later on about that, but we're really excited.
You'd like to talk.
Perfectly, yes.
Do you need, do you need to certify this material?
Yes. Well, parts of it. To instruct the course, yes, I need endorsed teachers. And that's been the struggle because you need to hire endorsed professionals to give credit for, for certain.
Or make them.
Right. Or you invest in trying to get them multi-versed. So we do have a staff number right now and a few of them actually who are getting additional endorsements to help offer more. So we're excited. So we'll see. We'll present more as we finish the study and look at the feasibility and see who the partners are, but we're very, very confident those two we can launch without so much of a issue.
Launch next year.
Yes, next year. Start there and see how many we can add as it takes.
Okay. You need to fill.
Um, it wouldn't, it's, it's the same right now. So to fill your sections.
Well, please.
Well, it would be ongoing because you have, at this level, 10th graders, you would get these things. So the 10th graders will be working on that while you're, you know, if you're in ag, you have to take horticulture. So if you're in that grade level, you take horticulture. If you're here, you have to also be in the FFA, get so many hours, you know, whatever it will look like that way. So it's not really a number. It's just our student body, using what we have now. We're not creating extra additional or, you know, we're really trying to use what we have now to maximize what we give kids when we graduate. If that makes sense.
Is this, is this be a block of time that would be devoted to this?
No. It would be a career plan of study, which we do now. So we take a career plan of study. Right now, we have, every kid has an academic career plan with all the courses they need to take. And if they want a completer, then they get two of these. Okay, next year, I'm going to get two of these. But so plug away and just get what you need and graduate with a diploma. This really targets it, takes the same career pathway and plan of study, but says, I want to do the ag academy. So you need all these pieces. It's going to fill your schedule very intentionally to give you that robust comprehensive education in that area. And with a lot of other areas intertwined, so it's not just that. It's not just that you're getting that in the ag program, you're going to go through welding, you get the welding certification, the building trades and animal science, vet science, FFA hours, all those pieces together. But it helps us better schedule our kids, so it's not just plugged in right there.
Sounds kind of like the way that governors or your works, if you have sort of a track, is that?
Yeah, yeah. It's sort of a track that you can pick and if it fits in your schedule, you can do multiple academies, absolutely. And there should be incentive to do that, you know? So and the post-secondary promises you get at the end of completing the academy should really drive a lot of that, especially if it's scholarships or guaranteed interviews for jobs or a guaranteed entrance into a community college program. Those things are very tangible, very easy to attain right now. So if we can just sort of funnel those toward that path and make, get kids more intentional about what they're doing by the time they graduate with all the skills. And that's what, you know, the Virginia graduate is supposed to be, right? So it helps us better do that with what we have. So that's the idea. But we'll give you a much more, better hope of you after we complete the feasibility study of how that's going to look.
Would another, you think the academy being building trades or something?
Building trades, we looked at actually having a trades academy. Trades academy would be another one. We're in talks with LFCC right now, but probably another year out from doing that one. But that one's basically having someone go through a whole program, which we created one as part of the CT Ed Consortium. We created one over at the Middletown. So the trades academy is you go through a two-year program and you graduate with HVAC, refrigeration, electrician, welding. And there's another one. So it's a two-year, very intensive program. And by the time you finish, you have all these certifications stacked up with credentials you go right to work. Plumbing, that's what it was, yeah. How'd you do?
It was, how'd you do that?
It would make sense.
That's my fortitude.
So, yeah. Right, so trades academy, we're looking at, but we're working on, we want.
These are the two that we're.
They're easiest to do with what we have right now with very low cost impact delay. So that's where the best place to start, you know, while you're.
A budget.
Right, especially with the budget we anticipate. And we're thinking with a model like this, we might be able to go for some new brands that are out there. So we'll, we'll keep you posted on that. Trades academy, yes, we thought about fine arts academy. There are a lot of them that popped up. So as we're, as we're going through, we'll talk. Those two are the easiest to do right now. Workplace skills here, you'll see just kind of a recap of how we've done. You've seen that our completer career cluster participation in different areas has kind of ebbed and flowed. We've seen an uptick, of course, in health science because we didn't have that prior to two years ago. Manufacturing has gone up. We've got a lot of people interested in welding, a lot of welding, especially now that we've been able to do a mold. So you get a college credit plus a certification. That's been great. Transportation distribution's gone down a little bit. Business stayed pretty steady. Construction's gone down. Yeah, yeah. Hospitality's gone up. So it kind of does mirror some of the, what we're seeing, I think, in the labor market. And that's what we have to gear our career and tech offerings toward. We have to do that analysis before we add any new clusters, so. But pretty good. We still need to increase our non-traditional participation, so we're working on that. Like getting more girl welders, more female welders and more men, you know, different classes, so. We still need to do that. Student community engagement, civic responsibility. Virginia's five Cs, incorporating that into the student experience is important. So we are working to increase those partnerships and we have increased partnerships with organizations to support provision of the division. Increased opportunities for student volunteerism, alignment of profile with graduate requirements for community service, promotion of student in division activities. We still want to increase opportunities for students to participate in civic and service-oriented programs. We have a lot of civic-minded organizations here and there's a lot of opportunity to volunteer. So getting our kids more opportunities to participate in those. Promoting the Ravenhead community to provide grassroots appreciation of the school and community and publicly recognizing our students and community volunteers. Recruitment and retention, we have to, let's see, we've done quite a lot in this area, especially in Commit to be Fit, because that's an area that maintaining a healthy and positive environment, we do sit to recruiting and retaining high-quality staff. We've increased district participation in recruitment events, really try to get out there and market our school. Implementation of our teacher orientation coordinators a few years ago, you'll remember that was part of trying to activate new teachers to the community and really getting them connected with us. It's hard to know where to go when they're new here and they're really not connected. Enhancement of teacher mentorship program, we've done a lot with that. Health and wellness course, maintaining competitive staff benefits, we've done really well with that. And we're going further with that. You'll remember that through Pierce Group benefits, we were so pleased with what they did for our supplementary, of supplementary insurance programs at no cost to us, just to show us, you know, kind of what they were capable of and you could see their service orientation and things like that. So we have, we have invested a little bit to do a complete overview of our health benefits package, what we're spending, what our, we don't have an HSA, so there's no incentive for anyone to move to a higher deductible plan. It costs a lot of money over time. We're worried about sustainability, right, of our great benefits program. It's great to keep, but as costs get higher and higher, we've got to come up with a sustainability model that makes sense and incentivizes people to move to a different plan. And also benefits the employee. There's a lot of rebates they can get on an HSA. We did implement an FSA this year, flexible spending account, which was a big step, but there's a lot more to do there. So they're going to have the buying power with the vendors, with the insurance agents and making sure that we're getting exactly what we need to have. That's part of our discussion, too. Yes, and Mr. Curry and I have been talking about that. There's a lot of.
You get a bigger pool. Maybe not.
Sicker.
We're doing really well. Our rates have been zero.
I know.
So I don't know if I want to let him wonder, but it's all the same money, right? So it's all the county. So if we all do better, we all will be better. So.
We talked about.
We've tried this several times before. We lost sleep. We lost.
It's right from enrollment dates and this.
And it can be done.
There's a way to do it.
No, and that's why Pierce will be able to do that in the best way of giving us the best, best case scenarios, great outlooks, projection on our actual claims data. They have access to that already through their, our partnership. So this is going to give us the best information you need to make the long-term decisions we have to. So that's something we move toward. We will continue to have a presence at recruitment fairs, work toward maintaining competitive salaries and benefits. As best we can with the money that we're receiving from the state. Continue our goals outlined in the Commit to be Fit program. That's been hugely successive and expanding and we're thrilled about that. Goal six, finding parent, family and community involvement. We really wanted to increase participation by our parents and families in the school district. That's always an ongoing challenge. Parents are busy and they have a lot of things on their plate too. So we continue to promote family and community partnerships through school events, increase community participation in decision-making. We send out a lot of surveys over the past couple of years to, if you're not going to come out to us, well, you at least on social media, take the survey and tell us what you think we need to know. And we get great responses, so that really helps us make better decisions too for everybody. More opportunities for community business partnerships, broaden opportunities for parents and community members to volunteer within schools. And we want to continue to promote, recognize, refine collaborative partnerships with our parents and the community and engage families in our school programs. So it's like One School, One Book going on right now. I love that program, it's just so sweet. There's kids reading. When I walk through the halls, I feel that, oh my gosh, one in particular that's been struggling from quite a bit of trauma and going through some things, but man, she can tell you all about this book. Give that what she likes about, who talks about, I mean, all these characters. So it's awesome. So it does bring everyone together and have a common theme, I understand. Family literacy night, PTO activities, the courtyard project, children's savings accounts. These are all ways we can engage families in the community more. So more things like that, we need everybody.
This is my future, is that what we're calling this program?
My future, yes, that's the program for the CSA, children's. That's how we'll talk about it, yes. And that's fresh, like just last week. So we finally decided that's where it was going, yes. So it will be My Future, and that's, it fits into everything. My Future Accounts, My Future Coaching, My Future Plan, it's just, it doesn't get too confusing with the family teachers. Why was it for you and it was all kind of getting a little bit confusing, so. It's the program. And then, of course, the underlying goal that we had in last year, we were getting all the awareness with implementing and sustaining a social emotional learning system. We were the first school district in the state to provide youth mental health first aid to all staff. We incorporated restorative justice practices. We established a mental health innovation team. We're providing trauma-informed training to all staff. And we were successful in advocating for, receiving funding for and hiring our first ever MSW LCSW social worker, which has been hugely successful. We have so much data already to share at budget time about how successful it really was. So vital next steps. We still are working on looking at a parallel curriculum for social emotional learning supports. We still have to incorporate social emotional learning tier behavior supports at different levels. We have to advocate for these needs. And we have to find a viable solution for the TDT crisis, a therapeutic day treatment. It is a crisis. The Medicaid expansion is really tied our hands at providing school-based therapeutic day treatment services. Medicaid expansion because of the new rules and stuff tied to the therapeutic day treatment requires so many hours of outpatient therapy as well before you can keep accessing your school-based, which is a barrier for families to access it. So that in turn creates an issue where we can't fill up our TDT counselor's schedule, so they get pulled from the school. And then you can't provide school-based mandated services for your IP students and kids who need that treatment. So we're in a crisis right now. It's, our TDT is being pulled away, not approved by a lot of insurance providers and Medicaid. It takes a long time for it to get to TDT. So it's a new situation we're in. Kathy Sigler and Carol Johnson are working tirelessly to try to find a solution for it. But it's going to have budgetary impact because we have to provide those services. And if it's not being, if you can't get reimbursed from Medicaid and CSA funding, guess who gets that? Okay, so a lot of issues that we've got to try to solve here. A whole lot that's not in our control. Uh, I don't know off the top of my head. I can check.
Is that I think, I think you're saying something about this?
You do. Oh yeah, because for pre-reduced lunch, we get to.
I want to say so, like, yes. It's lots of money.
Still, that's pretty high for a. That's a lot. Our pre-reduced lunch rate is up to forty-three percent at the elementary, right, forty-seven? But even if they qualify. And even if they qualify, the trouble is they won't reimburse until you've had so many hours of outpatient. Parents haven't followed through on that. You can't get the service paid for and they can't continue the treatment. And that's really detrimental to mental health, student and the service cost. Oh, that's a politics. But there's, there's a lot into it. Families First is going to be released January of this year, so maybe that will free up some additional funding that we can try to use through, through Department of Social Services. But we're all, and the social workers at DSS too have been screaming about this since they started kind of going down that road. So we've got to really take a look at that and try to figure out how many services it is. We're servicing them, we're meeting the mandates, just going to add up.
Yes, a hundred and six with a dark one, eight, as it's. One and six.
So that's in a nutshell where we are on our comprehensive plan. While we're working toward the challenges, the rules that are changed. How we're trying, all of that discussed we could on one page or three tools. And as we complete the next plan, we'll have a lot of.
Doings inside, inside your own.
Yeah, you have to, have to be flexible. Okay, finally, four point five is a budget calendar. We'd like to, like you to review for action later on. This does include your, the joint meeting we had talked about in February concerning preschool funding. However, we'll probably encompass a lot more about the funding struggles that we're having too. But it's a good idea that both boards, I think, at this point, do get together to discuss these competing priorities and struggles and the common challenges that we're having as a county. And hopefully present a united front so we can go together and advocate for what we need. Yes, February. It should be during your regular September meeting, Tuesday night, February eleventh, six thirty, yes. So we tried to align it to that. I haven't heard, I brought this up at the supervisor's meeting last week and they were to get to me if that was a conflict and I haven't heard. So I don't think that's okay, go with it. If you adopt this, I'll send it to Mr. Curry and he can move forward with his plan. It can change, yes. There's your timeline, budget's starting up.
Our chance. All right, we'll be moving on. Are there any questions regarding the calendar?
We have time. The school board works at, it's probably six thirty. Oh, I'm sorry.
That completes the items, just to superhand.
Thank you very much. What's the headboard for?
I just met briefly with Kiki who was speaking during the. Yeah, except for when this happens, who left.
MBGS? Okay, the next thing on the agenda is actually a discussion that Rachel had requested regarding green cleaning. And each person has a handout, she sent us something in the mail to.
Yeah. Yeah, I will, yeah. So in light of our wellness focus at our school, we need to be fit and put more, I had it into a lot of indoor time at school. Also, just having had a lot of, there's, I, I think it's really good to always look again at what, at what we're doing in our facility, especially when we're very much in code, the old organs, and it's not well-anticipated. And so I, I do think we should be looking towards health and wellness and all and everything that we do. A lot of the, a lot of the cleaning agents that we use can be, can be irritating for certain people with asthma, younger people, people with, just anybody, I mean, they can be, they can be. Irritants. There are, I accept a big amount of information, there's a lot of. I, well, this is, this is the most simple explanation of what green cleaning means. It doesn't mean not cleaning, it doesn't mean not connected with further disease. It just means looking at sensitivities and trying to use products that, that, that reduce the amount of people that are sensitive to coming in, whether it be someone coming in after school at a public event, whether it be a kid who is, is capable of wiping at, at the, at the lunchroom, whether it be something, something that just you can do, that have, um, people of color, people that are in our schools. We just really want to have our school's skill and wellness and self-confidence. This, this page about what green cleaning is, it just means, it just means using cleaning products and practices that can be less harmful to human health and the environment and that will help improve indoor air quality. I do think that it's just always good to look again and look for requests, I kind of like to just discuss a little bit with the board. It would, it makes a lot of sense at this point when the inside thinks about what we're using. We do, and I realize there was a, there was a, a discussion for this, and we also the same, huh? That's, that's the best thing that's on the.
First thing I think about is it's going to cost me something.
Yeah.
So, yeah, well, we know the doubt, but if it costs us less and we're still able to achieve the same goal, then certainly it's a good idea.
Yeah, it seems like if we can implement a policy of this benefits line, things have changed in terms of costs. It's always good to just, to just reevaluate. We can reap the zen, event absences by having kids get a little feel more comfortable and safe in school. We can save by using fewer products in some places, just by looking at. Really would require a comfortable to look at, to do, to do studying and everything, of course, like. But I would like to look at, we'll do comment when they come in after hours at the smell. Yeah, but it's also got fragrances and volatile organic compounds and things that we don't necessarily need to come to be clean and disinfective. Um, that's a, that's a question that we would need to, we would, we would need to look at.
Well, those were, your, your questions are all exactly pertinent to what we do. I did bring this up to the administrative team and our health safety team. So we do have a team that could do a feasibility study of this. Lina Torrance is our division nurse and she is responsible ultimately to follow our health policy, all the regs, ensure that we have the, the well-being of students, you know, on meeting all the criteria. She's not opposed, nobody was opposed to it, but questions, same questions. Will it provide the same level of effectiveness as the products that we're mandated to use to, to make sure we have that level of sanitation in the schools? And also is it cost prohibitive or not, and how much will it compare to that? So both of those things we'd be willing to bring together. The next board meeting, it just will take some time to gather it and.
Yes, it's a lot to get.
You could do a little bit of stuff, I mean, you know, throughout the year and then maybe decide to do it.
I do think that minimalities, you know, we show everything, we are using the school is being used according to the labels that they can be measured. Have the children, are not using things that should be kept out of their reach in all areas.
And those are the easy things we can institute right away. We have, that's part of our training, you know, making sure the safety labels are red. No child should be using any cleaning products, that should not be, you know, that, so, I mean, they are into me. But we'll, we'll take care of that, but those, those things. And also there's certainly added chemicals with the nice scented stuff that sometimes parents will donate that we don't, that's not necessarily what order. We try to go more hypoallergenic, less scent, because that's the added chemicals you're detecting. So on our supply list, be a little bit more clear about, you know, please.
I don't know, the files and suppliers, because there are pictures of scented.
There are, exactly.
Of the reach of children.
Yeah, that they're asking totally for, you know, that seems, isn't it, our balls of just education. So those are little things we could certainly do to improve. And then if the board is willing and you have consensus, you want to hear one, then I'll, I'll set the team in motion to go ahead and do the feasibility study and bring back in December.
So even if it wasn't in December, if it, so if it has a cost impact, it's good for us to just ask, to start a cycle where, if we're going in the budget cycle and the impact didn't go out at the beginning. And so while it would be nice to act quickly, I would think I would, I mean, I would, certainly it's a good direction. I would think we would, oh, it's a good direction. So, yeah, we want to pursue it, but I still want it to be the overwhelming thing that this group is working on immediately.
Well, in this time frame is okay right now, it's just one after we hit that a hundred and ten, then it's going to get pretty crazy. And before that point, I think we can bring back some valuable information by the end of the time, give you a book you're actually looking for.
And I sent the report that was done this in twenty eighteen, and it describes just using different pairs of cleaning products, but there are a lot of different case studies that are, that we can, that we can. We can look at, for case studies, but also we could have a green certification. That could be something, the brighter reputation. I do think that our iPhone's for the numbers, possibly, that some people might like to see that.
A little percent are. Then there are workshops and training for the user.
Yeah, well, we don't have to, actually, we have Bayport, who are insurance company that provides that, so we can train. Or custodians, passengers, Southwest drivers, we have geared toward that very thing. Are you using everything correctly, back injuries, slips and falls.
I didn't think I'd ever say anymore, we've sent somebody to talk.
They don't need to go, we bring them here for free. Yeah, that's part of our insurance field, so yeah. So we do that periodically, our custodians, any new custodians have to go through that.
If you do it right, I believe we could actually save money and. And become a big school and that could bring insurance education and wellness. It's about what you do and what you want.
So we'll, we'll bring to you if it feels okay, I have consent to go ahead and. Bring you, if we need more time, then it won't be in December, but in one of the following board meetings, we'll be with whatever we found out. Get all the data that we have and, you know, the statistics. So with those two in mind, the big, the biggies are the costs of switching over products and also the effectiveness. Is it as effective or does it need the sanitation, sanitation regulations we need to have in the school to make sure that.
I think it would be great, very good, because of wellness at everyone at school. It's really, I'd like to know how many people have, have asthma and that's really important. And that's, people are sensitive and asthma is on the rise nationally, we'd say, um, that's some of the issues. We're trying to, so we're trying to, you know, a lot of, like, this is, this is important to look at. And that just from the journey, it's definitely, it's very, very easily, that would have some of the issues. It's, um, it's possible that we just can't put that, uh, as a bigger piece. This is just from.
Well, thanks for having me, but I guess we'll spawn a team, take a look, get some feedback, if we need more time, we have the time.
Thank you.
But the next thing on the agenda is. The ball field, taking me out to the ball field. And I see that attached is a proposal, the level of the investment we made by. I guess we've had time to review it. We're basically given a permission to spend our money on our property.
I have a question. What about conflict with the outfield and the softball is the soccer field? How do you, if there's a soccer game and a softball game, if it ever happens, who gets, how do you figure out who gets second?
This is planning, fencing.
I mean, that's the only thing that I, I mean, I have nothing.
The, the.
More biased about the soccer.
They're involved the whole way.
Yeah.
And I saw y'all's decision, heard in our meeting this week. And it's, it's.
And it's, it's both, if I understand correctly, the four proposed to do this is only a practice field. It'll play most of theirs behind it.
Oh, okay.
But we're going to re, redesign it so that it does not affect. Yeah, I drew it. I actually, I was out in town. My son and I drew it back this morning. I was trying to explain it over the phone, but it's, it, they're actually current the other way.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And then that would, that would eliminate the, yeah, backside.
And there'll be a fence around the, the softball.
And with the practice field, the thing you need to do is put the netting around it.
It's actually a lot closer on the drawing than actually it is.
Yeah, the, it was hard to, just to grab what I wanted about five miles away.
It's not to scale, but.
Sometimes cursing can be hard when you're insane.
I was talking to the A D and she said she would be grateful for having another practice field available to the school as well. So you all aren't using it, it's available to the schools as well. So it seems to be.
Yeah, our goal is to be a regulation field where actually could be played on as the other field.
My understanding is there will be fencing along the outfield.
Yeah, it'll be completely fenced in as the other field is. We're actually going to do.
That's going to use all summer.
Yeah.
Would be a grassing field or a dirty field?
Be a dirt.
It's, it's usually beneficial, I think, to soccer.
We just need to raise some money and the weather needs to hold off.
It's not holding.
So it's not cooperating tonight.
Well, it's providing more room for kids to participate.
Now, this is not something that we, on our action items list, is not something that we need to vote on.
Kind of like what there are, you know, the sort of the similar things, donation, we'll run through all the processes to ensure it's compliant.
Yeah, we, we're going to raise some money. We're not going to take it out of the funds of the little people. Only have to be raised to do this project.
Do you have grants, a fund?
If there's something there and somebody can help me with that, I would love to do that.
Did anybody look at the other field though?
I spoke with Ms. Payne about a month ago. I, we'd been actually, she was actually out in town. I spoke with her when she called me back and then, of course, I was out in town. Uh, the field is not available for us to use. I do know that. But as far as the using the fencing, I used to do a fence counter. But I'd rather not go there. I'd rather start first. So I was, we pulled those long poles out and have to be given and. Always look for. It, it was a good idea.
So at the moment, I would say is there consensus of doing that we, we might project in various. Fundraising, if we can find a grant, change in that direction would be a good thing for the community.
Thank you. I hope that you can recommend some more.
I think if anybody can, you can for this.
Thank you.
This guy put up a mile of deer fence on our farm.
All right, thanks. All right, uh, all right, moving on to public comment. Anyone would like to address the board this evening, just now? Reading page. When did come to school, Dr.?
And Dr. Grimsley does such great presentations. I really do. Uh, this is just a real time of, uh, transition and we hope a leap forward for Headwaters. We are finishing our strategic plan on Saturday and you will all get a copy of it. And I want to thank those of you who participated and let us, uh, interview you and gave frank comments, which really helped us, uh, in what we hope is a pretty dynamic next five years. Uh, it also includes a review of all the programs that we do. So we may be talking to some of you again. Uh, they could, we want them to be effective and what the school needs, not just something that makes our volunteers happy. And also a part of those changes, as Rachel noted, uh, Kevin Brannan has resigned. And we will begin, uh, beginning a search on Monday, uh, for a new executive director. Uh, one of the things he did very well was work well with Dr. Grimsley and administration. Uh, I am the liaison until we hire someone, as we're sharing. Uh, but we really hope to continue that relationship. Uh, we really hope to hire somebody from Rappahannock County, uh, either living here now or once lived here, uh, to really be the public face of Headwaters and, and really know the county well. Uh, if you have any ideas or if you know somebody who'd be a great candidate, please send them over. And, uh, we will also keep you posted on how this goes forward. We're also really rebuilding, I almost call it, our board. We had a number of people who, uh, put in six years of service to Headwaters and all of our, uh, terms are over the last year have been expiring. And we have not done the best of jobs in building, uh, the news and generation of board members. My term ends on, uh, uh, in December. Uh, our biggest loss was Mrs. Grove, uh, who, uh, even though we tried to tell her we could change the bylaws, was not willing to take on another six years. Uh, we weren't going to let her get on with this one, uh, and the F and the S R. So we are, like every other organization, I think, in Rappahannock County, really looking to the next generation and some younger board members. We are very interested in board members who have a real interest in the school, a background in, in schools, have children in the schools. Our latest new board member is another teacher, it's Bethany Mostert. And, uh, we really are feeling like we've got, we're really looking forward to putting together a dynamic board. But thank you for all your support. As I always say, but it's so important to us, uh, Dr. Grimsley is a joy to work with us. This is the reason for us. So thank you. Got any questions? But that's where we are.
Anyone else? All right, moving on. Is there a motion approved budget counter? Motion, Mr. Bonds, or second? Second, Mr. Grove. Comments? All favor I?
I have no.
New business. Well, new business.
Well, new business.
Well, first of all, I would like to congratulate Mr. Byer and Mr. Rubin for their reelection. So, yeah, I didn't think, okay. I just needed one and I, I didn't need that. Succeeded, okay.
Well, somebody else got two, didn't you?
It's interesting. Interesting conversations. Outside the polling place. Anyway, uh, also, uh, under business, I want to make sure you wear soap. Uh, initially, uh, for initial conversations that started at polling place, it turned into an email that I got from, uh, from Ron Frager, which I passed on to, uh, so you can take a look at. He's suggesting, you know, we're already taking steps to put together a meeting that would occur before our December meeting. So, our member's really busy for the rest of this month for us. Uh, so I suggested to Dr. Grimsley that she try to work with Gary to find the time in the first week of December. And, and it would not be a, it's a public meeting that doesn't, so the idea is two board members from each board. And the, uh, county administrator and superintendent of schools getting together to have a discussion. What about, well, uh, initially, uh, the conversation was driven just, what does, what does this L C I change mean to the county? And next year's budget? And then, of course, while we're sitting here tonight, I'm realizing, hey, because the Medicaid issues, we want to stay, and everybody's aware of the ideas, and also preschool, and I also talk about preschool and how, uh, we need to be, are we, how committed is the community to the continuing of what we've already accomplished last year at the last minute? So that's a very last minute in, in a parent. So, uh, these types of things would come to the table now. My only warning is that the last time we tried to do this, because I was a part of it, there was, uh, you know, people were afraid that in a dark room and, you know, all those were being nudged and, and we, you know, what's going on and, and deals were being made and it was nothing like that. But, uh, so this forum that we're going to have, by the way, also, uh, the plan was that until here and until it's in a, done, uh, are, are sworn in, that they can come and they can officially start telling us to, uh, understand the challenges related to budget, especially, uh, this piece of the board. So, uh, so to eliminate, uh, this mask of who can come and can't, it's just going to be a public meeting. It's, it's not, uh, a real meeting. You know what I mean? Not a.
It's a work session.
It's a work session, but it, but it's not a work session. All right, so I guess what I'm doing is I'm uninviting three board members, uh, to make sure that it's not a, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, you can only have two board members.
We just have to figure out which two. And it's going to be dependent on the schedule. I might not be able to make it. Depends on what they negotiate as a meeting day, whether I can get out of work or not.
Well, we choose two and they're all turned.
Anyway, that's, I have the idea and know that, uh, if you want to think about it, after, maybe we can always, you know, talk about offline too. So really good question, Rachel. So.
Point of doubt's now.
So when we first, when we first had a conversation about this, I had suggested something quarterly, just to kind of keep the, so that if there were questions that came up, that there would be a forum created for that. So, uh, quarterly was the idea. Could it be two, once a month's too much? I think we did it quarterly when we first designed this thing with Dr. Booth years and years ago. So, uh, and I had a feeling that at the time that rhythm was good. But it came across like a secret meeting. It was not, not, wasn't, there was really nothing secret about that.
And remember when we, when we first had introduced that at the time, there was a lot of, you know, misunderstandings and there was some conflict and transparency issues. So I feel like we're in a really good place now where I think we've gone, um, over and above to put everything out there. And we can continue the conversation now and out in the open and talk together about it.
So we'll be letting the press know when things happen and the public seems to certainly come. But my goal is to get us all on the table in school, so it could be kind of crowded. If, you know, fifty people show up, we're in trouble. But I have a feeling it'll be more like a blended work session where we might have half a dozen. Pretty safe for us to try and get that group together. So, um, I would like to be there. So I'm going to say I would like to be there. Who else would want to make sure that you're there? Who insists on making sure that they don't miss this thing? I tell you what, I could bow out. I'd like to be there.
Well, you can make not be a minute.
If I can't, then was the alternate should be able to show up.
I'll, I'll be an alternate.
All right for now? Is it okay for now? Now, here's the other thing. This is not an official committee of any kind. So as we get into the year and we have our next quarterly meeting, we can swap roles. And, but I would say this, we need a constant. We need a constant on that thing. So somebody needs to be a constant. That's really, that's great. Needs to be somebody.
I can usually.
Because we'll need. So, uh, what a meeting, uh, probably, if we can make it work per se, um, of December. That's our goal.
Well, it'd be the December two, three, four, five.
Somewhere in there, we'll see.
If you want to do it before our next meeting.
Their board meeting's the first, right?
They wait, they meet on the second.
They meet on the second.
On the second of December.
Okay.
And then you've got two submissions.
Another thing I remember about the meetings we used to have, I would come to Little Washington at basically, uh, like seven A M. So that I could probably get to work maybe sometime. So that probably. Yeah, that's how people called it off before, because I was still trying to. But I was sleeping in that day, just so I could. All right. So anyway, our superintendent and, and the county administrator, we'll try, and we'll try to, we'll discuss the day and the time and we'll discuss how we're going. All right? And the goals strictly initially would be. Anything else?
I have an issue. I, I'm not, um, I, I'm concerned. I talked to a few people. There, there are many holes in the county where handheld. Radio coverage for our buses. Uh, the buses stop on your road down there on Tiger Valley or whatever. Oh, God, I forgot. Whatever, perky with the bus, there's no communication back there. The, the answer to communication is probably cell phone. Uh, I think the planning commission is taking up cell phones. And I think we as a board, for the safety sake, it's important. Woodville and the Frams, which will make three towers that are necessary to call pepper to, very, uh, that whole area of the cover. Probably sixty-five percent of the coverage, but we don't have that. My thought.
So I guess if, uh, if anything, we, if we want to support, so if that we just need to make the board's heard.
I think we need to write a letter to the county.
As a board?
I think that's a good idea. I mean, part of the rescue, like, we support.
Well, the fire problems from you.
Yeah, I think the long levers they have of the necessity of it.
Yeah, I'm looking at sixty or forty or fifty kids on the bus and, uh, fall and breathe and the bus creeps down. There's no way. Unless you go to the house and they have to have a, a limelight. That's what they have to be now, I guess.
We haven't had.
You sure there's no, no coverage, right? It's very spotty.
There's no, there's some places that I cannot get out on my cordless. In that area, lots of places, trust me.
And it was unclear, I guess, when they were talking about the upgrade of the new system, how that was going to affect our radios and clarity or not. So, um, there's that piece too, so.
Is there a plan to change our radios now?
We have our new radios. We're just waiting for the new.
Well, you have to.
So, um, yeah, so seeing how all that works, but not just the towers themselves, but the, that system block here that's going to be upgraded and up and running, it still hasn't.
But that, that system cannot go up and running until.
Towers, is that what's going to be?
Yeah. That's why, that's why the tower in Woodville is not, but the T one line is not there yet.
So is, uh, does this board want to write another, does it come from me? Does it come from the superintendent as a board?
I think it comes from you as a board.
For the board?
For, I don't think it's. For, I don't think it's.
So, I would address a letter from the school, if school has consensus about supporting it, do you? Consensus?
Supporting communications for, I wouldn't say supporting any specific case, any, yeah, on any particular piece of land.
No, I just think we need to have.
Okay, I think communication.
A connected communication.
I don't want to get behind one patch of land where something has to be. Because then that's not.
That's not our job.
That's not our job. That's not.
So, our job is to, we want them to facilitate communications intercompany.
Okay, that's the main job, we got that expertise on.
No, I'm not going to say that it needs to be, that you don't know.
All right, so I'm going to write something down, and before I sign, I would want to circulate to make sure you all have an opportunity to read it. Okay? If you have any suggestions, consider.
I'm just thinking, you know.
What's that?
All the cases.
Well, you know, it's funny, I know.
So, one bad thing happened. We had, in the last four years, we've had three people die in that area. And we, that could have been. One other thing.
And recipient, hold on a second, the recipient of that letter is planning.
It could be more. Could be. Just for point of information, the Lions Club has a really unique vision screening device, a brand new feature that we've offered to, to done the screening at the elementary and all of that. The elementary school has now bought a vision device, not quite as good as ours, but pretty good. And so they're going to be able to do all the new kids as they come in right away, and that's a great thing. We've offered to do screening for home school kids. Unfortunately, we've only had one family, so our S U did, but we're going to be there. And if some board just happens to show up, they'll be there. And there's a health screening Saturday and that's, that the high school kids are going to be working on it as well by time of launch. I think that.
Anything else, anybody? Our next meeting is scheduled, board meeting is December the tenth at six thirty in the same room. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I knew that the board can lead closed session, the calling of the, to discuss and consider the recording of staff members, the classified position, the request, the use of sick leave bank, the retirement of the protection position, the reputation of the classified position, the discretion of superintendent's role in children's clothes, section two point two, that's thirty-seven, one one A one.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Just a second. On favor, aye?
Aye.
So, a little recess, because time goes, we're going to be in closed session.